Good evening, councillors, officers and members of the public in attendance. And those who are viewing online. I would like to declare tonight's meeting commencing at four minutes past six. My name is councillor Julie Williams, I'm the mayor of Darabben City Council and I'm also tonight's chairperson. It is my pleasure to welcome you all here tonight. This meeting is being held in person and it has a recording that you can and be available on the council website as soon as practical after the meeting. I'd like to acknowledge the traditional owners, the Warrung people, the Warranjerry and the traditional, sorry, they acknowledge the Warranjerry, the Warrung people and the traditional owners on the land that we gather here today and pay our respects to elders, past, present and emerging and their continuing connection to the land, water and culture. Before we begin, I would like to introduce you to our councillors and senior staff who are with us this evening. I have councillor Suzanne Newton, our deputy mayor, councillor Emily Demetriades, councillor Gaetano Greco, councillor Tim Lawrence, councillor Trent McCarthy and councillor Susan Rennie. The officers that we have this evening, I have Peter Smith, our CEO, I have Tanya Mackenzie from General Manager and Governance Engagement, Rachel, our General Manager and Operational and Capital, I have Kylie from General Manager and Community, Vanessa, our General Manager for City and Sustainability and Strategy, and Bobby on my side, Acting Head of Governance and Risk. Apologies this evening, I have councillor Messina and councillor Hannan, which are both on approval leave of absence. Councillors and officers, I would like to ask if any councillors or officers have any disclosures they would like to declare this evening?
Yeah, thank you Mayor Williams. I don't have a conflict, but it is in the governance report that I had a child on the childcare waiting list. I've since taken him off the waiting list as I've got him a spot in the private childcare, so just want to note that in a minute, so thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Any other officers or councillors would like to declare any conflicts of interest this evening? If not, thank you. I'll go on to confirmation of minutes of previous meeting. Councillors, could I please have a mover? For the adoption of the minutes of the ordinary council meeting that was held on August 28th. I have councillor Rennie and then I saw councillor Greco as councillor Rennie is the mover and councillor Greco is the secondor. I'll put that to vote, all those in favour, and that has been carried in amicably, thank you. Councillors' occupational health and safety responsibility that we have here to ensure that everyone who is attending tonight's meeting feels both safe physically and emotionally. Public question time, councillors will now move into our 30-minute public question time. And if we exceed the question time, I will ask for a procedural motion to extend question time for another 30 minutes. In line with our council's governance rules, no question will be taken from persons in the gallery unless they have been submitted by 12pm today. You can only ask a maximum of twelve, sorry, three questions and you have no more than two minutes to speak. So kindly please be mindful of your question. Questions relating to notice of motions, petitions and urgent businesses will not be accepted in accordance to the governance rules. For members of the public who have registered, to ask a question in person, I will call your name out in the time. If I call your name out and you do not respond, I would take it that you are not in the gallery and one of our officers will read out your question on your behalf. The relevant general manager will then respond to your question. If you are in attendance, I will invite you to come up to the lectern to state your name and suburb and ask your question. Light questions will be grouped together, the first person who submitted the light question can ask their question. So this evening we'll go to our first person. I have Cade Matthews from Thornbury, is Cade in the gallery? If not, then I'll ask one of our officers to kindly read out Cade's question, thank you.
Thank you Mayor, Cade has three questions. The first is, will council hold an event on coming out day on 11 October 2023 in support of the local LGBTIQA+ community? The second question, will council be making a submission to the Victorian Government's consultation on strengthening Victoria's laws against hate speech and hate conduct in line with Action 3.5.4 of the Darabben Sexuality, Sex and Gender Diversity Action Plan? And the third question, what is council doing to ensure a safe and healthy working environment for all staff, particularly library staff when organising LGBTIQA+ activities, events and programmes?
Thank you, Kylie will answer that question, thank you.
Through you Mayor, thank you for your questions, Cade. In terms of question one, council formally recognises a number of LGBTIQA+ dates of significance across the year. Currently, coming out day is not one of the dates recognised in council's social justice calendar. As part of the development of council's new LGBTIQA+ action plan, we will review the dates of significance with feedback from LGBTIQA+ people and communities connected to Darabben and council's Sexuality, Sex and Gender Diversity Advisory Committee. Engagement on the draft action plan is scheduled to take place in 2024. In terms of question two, council continues to support and participate in work seeking to strengthen human rights protections for communities in Darabben who are at greatest risk of hateful speech and conduct. We are monitoring the Victorian Government's consultation on this important and much needed law reform. Any decision to provide a submission will be informed by council's Sexuality, Sex and Gender Diversity Advisory Committee. And lastly, in terms of question three, providing a safe environment for staff and community is paramount when organising any events or activities. Where there may be a possibility of safety risk, a risk mitigation strategy is developed with staff, our partners and local agencies. If there is a particular incident or issue, I'd encourage you to reach out so that we can investigate that for you.
Thank you. The next person I have is Stacey Tims from Preston, is Stacey in the gallery this evening? If not, then I'll have one of our officers to ask the question on their behalf, thank you.
Thank you Mayor, through you. There are three questions from Stacey, the first, could council please provide an update on the development of its community flag schedule? And will this include flying flags half mast on Invasion Day? Number two, given the nasty threats, emails and calls for cancellation of the Rainbow Storytime event at Reservoir Library earlier this year, how can the community support council, its libraries and librarians to deal with this hate? And the third question, how could council use its general local law, particularly clause 24.2, to ensure the safety and security of people attending events such as the Rainbow Storytime in the future?
Thank you Kylie.
Through you Mayor, thank you for the questions, Stacey. On January 26th, the flags are lowered at council's municipal offices in Preston and Bandura Homestead Art Centre. A civic flag policy is in development, which will also include a draft community flag schedule and councillors will be briefed on that later this year. In terms of question two, Rainbow Storytime was held at all libraries in Darabben earlier this year and feedback from community was very supportive and recognised council's continued support of LGBTIQA+ families. With respect to question three, I've been advised that council's local law does provide officers authority to deal with inappropriate behaviour in council buildings during an event. However, it is council's preference to work in partnership with Victoria Police, who are well trained and equipped to handle these types of situations in the interest of maintaining peace and ensuring community safety.
Thank you Kylie. The next person I have is Margaret. Is Margaret in our gallery this evening? Margaret Kukalo? No? I have one of our officers to kindly please read out Margaret's questions.
Thank you, through you Mayor, there is one question. Council officers promised results of the parking permit consultation would be discussed at council meeting on the 24th of July. It is now halfway through September and there's no evidence of the consultation coming to council. Can you please explain the delay and give advice on when residents can expect to see the results?
Thank you Vanessa.
Thank you, through you Mayor Williams, thank you Margaret for your question. The Parking Permit Policy Review Project remains important to council. The robust analysis and assessment needed to finalise recommendations to council has taken a little longer than we had expected and I am anticipating a report to council in October, which will present the consultation results and will also recommend a draft policy to council.
Thank you. The next person I have on our list of questions is Nicola Coles, is Nicola Coles here to come up to the lectern? If not, then I'll ask our officers to kindly please read out Nicola's questions.
Thank you, through you Mayor, there are three questions, the first, can council explain how Darabben local laws could protect the ancient red gum tree at Latrobe Campus Bandura? What is the council doing to protect this invaluable irreplaceable tree, especially considering a local law's permit to destroy the tree was granted on the 20th of May 2023 and later withdrawn? The second question, if Honeywell or Latrobe University reapply for a permit to destroy or otherwise damage the ancient river Red Gum with more than 20 hollows, will Darabben council put the application on public notice? And/or will the original objectors to the recently lapsed permit, 20th of September, be notified? And the third question, what is the Darabben council going to do to protect the 200 identified significant trees within the Latrobe University Campus Bandura? As the majority of these trees have no environmental significance overlays and no heritage overlays and are in the public use zone, making them vulnerable?
Thank you Anna. The next person I have on our list this evening? Oh, sorry, I have Vanessa, who will be answering those questions, thank you.
Through you Mayor, thank you for your questions Nicola. Regarding question one, council places significant emphasis on the preservation and sustainability of our trees. We recognise their vital role in our environment. The Tree Protection on Private Property Local Law 2019 requires any property owner to seek a permit if they wish to remove a tree or to trim a tree. When council receives a request for a permit, it is reviewed by the Parks and Open Space Team, who provide expert advice. And if a local law permit is issued, it must be adhered to. Also, a senior officer will give you a call tomorrow to discuss further. Regarding your question two, planning permit application D285 2023 for the site lapsed on the 21st of September this year. If a new application is lodged in the future, council will follow the public advertising requirements of the Planning and Environment Act, specifically section 52. Council cannot predetermine the form or content of a future planning permit application, however, under the Act, council must give notice to adjoining lots, which can also include a site notice. Council also has discretion to extend the notice to others that the permit may cause a material detriment to. And regarding number three, as per above, Darabben's trees are currently protected through the local law and through the operation of clause 52.17, native vegetation of the Darabben Planning Scheme, which does require a permit to remove, destroy or lot native vegetation on lots that are greater than point four hectares.
Thank you Vanessa. The next person I have is Ruth Jelley, is Ruth Jelley in the gallery this evening? Thank you Ruth, if you can kindly come up to the lectern and just state your name and your suburb.
Thank you, good evening, my name is Ruth Jelley of Northcote. My questions this evening relate to the future planning for the Route 86 tram corridor along High Street in Northcote and Thornbury. Question number one, does council have a preferred design solution for the types or designs and locations of tram stops for the Route 86 upgrade programme? Question number two, will council strongly and actively advocate for tram stop designs that prioritise outcomes for pedestrians and bike riders? For example, by ensuring that pedestrians can cross High Street safely, all in one go, using a single set of traffic lights and supporting separated bike lanes to improve safety for vulnerable road users? Question number three, is Darabben council actively planning to leverage state government funding for streetscape improvements coinciding with the installation of accessible tram stops such as seating for path trading space, tree planting, drinking fountains and bicycle parking?
Thank you Ruth, I'll have one of our officers to respond to your questions, Vanessa, thank you.
You Mayor Williams, thank you Ruth for your questions. And just to provide a little bit of context for people who might be watching, the High Street Tram Corridor project is a Victorian Government investigation that will result in a design for tram stop upgrades and that will be subject to future funding applications. And council is working with the Department of Transport and Planning on these designs to provide our feedback and local knowledge. So regarding question one, at this stage Darabben doesn't have a preferred design solution. We will however be seeking a solution that aligns with the primary multimodal street type in the Darabben transport strategy. Regarding to, yes, road safety for our vulnerable road users is a priority. And officers will continue to seek alignment of the Darabben transport strategy, which includes policy 8.3, which is improve connections and access to public transport services by sustainable modes. This includes access by walking, cycling and proximity to car share vehicles. And finally Ruth, regarding question three, yes, council is providing feedback on the design to integrate future tram stop improvements with urban design improvements that might occur along the corridor in the future.
Thank you, sorry, can I just ask a follow-up question about that last one, does that include seeking state government funding and support for those improvements? That wasn't clear, sorry.
Thank you Ruth, that would be dependent on council's advocacy strategy that's endorsed at the time.
Thanks very much.
Thank you Ruth. John Nugent, would you like to come up to the lectern and ask your questions, just state your name and your suburb, thank you.
John Nugent Ebbing. Mayor Williams, I referred to the question that I asked at the last council meeting, re-asking question from the floor without submitting a question first. In the reply, it was advised that it was going out for public comment. My question, why is it going out for public comment when this was brought about by an error by a council staff member? It has been 10 months and still nothing has happened. When will the residents have their rights returned to them? Want me to keep going?
Yes, please.
Okay. Next question. Mayor Williams, could you please advise when all the pathways will be completed at Donath West Reserve? These pathways were not included in the master plan but were asked for. Also required is the park lighting for safety purposes and the question is, when will Donath West be the same standard as our parks in the south? And my final question is, Mayor Williams, could you advise when council staff are asked a question at a council meeting, council staff give a response? Do council staff follow up on what has been asked or do they do nothing? For example, the overcrowding of Preston Market and streets in the surrounding area, keeping customer service area open over the Christmas period and Darabben Club Performances subsidy programme which is discriminatory against children. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you John, over to Tanya, thank you.
Thanks for your questions John. I'm going to answer your first question and your third question and then I'll pass over to Kylie for your second question. In regards to your first question, I answered that at the last meeting and our response isn't any different. The rules are in our governance rules and they will go out for consultation. In response to your second question, your third question, sorry, each question is submitted prior to the council meeting and is answered by an internal subject matter expert. In instances where the answer is not available within the timeframe, the answer is subsequently provided in the council meeting minutes. I recall answering one of those questions you used as an example last meeting as well and I've checked the minutes, if you want to check last meetings minutes, they're on page 10.
Through you Mayor, John, in respect to question two, I've been advised that council's master plan for Donath Reserve indicates the central and main paths are to be sealed and I've been advised that these are. Most secondary paths are unsealed and no further pathway works are currently scheduled for Donath Reserve.
Thank you Kylie and thank you Tanya. Councillors, that is all I have for question time this evening. We'll move over into our reports. I will allow time for councillors to ask our officers questions before we go into the debate. But before I do, I will actually indicate that we do have not received any submissions this evening and we also have no petitions and that is why we're going straight into our reports. So this evening, for consideration, we have the draft 2023 Financial Report and Performance Statement 9.1.
I'm happy to move.
Councillors, do we have any questions in reference to this before we enter the debate? If there are no questions, then happy to ask for a mover, councillor Newton. And councillor Rennie is the secondor, councillor Newton?
Thank you Mayor Williams. I'll first note that I'm not on the Audit and Risk Committee, but I will be signing this financial report as the deputy mayor as councillor Messina is not available today. And I'll start by saying, Mayor Williams, for the year ending 30th of June 2023, council achieved an operating surplus of 10.55 million, which was 2.29 million greater than budgeted in the annual report. The higher surplus reflects many factors, including the receipt of operating and capital grant funding, including federal government advance payment of the Commonwealth Financial Assistance Grant and local roads and community infrastructure funding. Mayor Williams, council spent 53.90 million on capital works for the year ending 30th of June 2023, which was 12.33 million dollars less than the annual budget of 66.23 million. Significant capital spend included the continued redevelopment of the Northcote Aquatic and Recreation Centre, which is soon to open, Darabben Intercultural Centre, the Darabben Resource Recovery Centre, infrastructure and the construction of wetlands at IW Doll Reserve. Council's cash investment position at the end of June was a positive bank balance of 55.97 million, which was 7.03 million ahead of budgeted forecast. This result primarily reflects the timing of receipt of rates and government funding and payments to employees and suppliers and payments for capital works. And finally, Mayor Williams, in relation to the performance statement of the 28 indicators audited by VAGO, the Victorian Auditor General's office, 17 were exceeded or improved on in comparison to the results of the previous year. And just from my perspective, I really wanted to give a shout out to Daryl, who's been our interim chief financial officer for getting us to this point. And I also wanted to recognise the Audit and Risk Committee for their feedback as well. And I think it is worth noting that this year we did have the waste charge, which I think was incredibly important to our financial sustainability, brought us in line with other councils and helped us introduce universal FOGO across the city. And I also think it's worth mentioning that we did something that doesn't always happen, which is that we brought a contracted services in-house and that was the Darabben Resource and Recovery Centre in My ward. So big shout out to the team for getting us to this point and thank you all.
Thank you councillor Newton, councillor Rennie?
Thank you Mayor Williams and councillor Newton has done a fine job of explaining much of what's in front of us tonight. This is, all budgets are interesting, I think this is particularly interesting and it's the first time I believe that council's total revenue has exceeded 200 million dollars. It's a good round number for us to be able to speak to our community about what the budget of council looks like and the type of money that we are stewarding through our roles as councillors. Councillor Newton has touched on the fact that the introduction of a waste charge was a significant change in this year. One of the other significant changes is this is the first year, certainly in my time on council, that council has taken out some borrowings and they've been taken out to fund the Northcote Aquatic and Recreation Centre, an important piece of intergenerational infrastructure. And I think that as a council, we acknowledge the benefit and value to be gained from using borrowings to fund intergenerational infrastructure. But it does change the financial profile of the organisation somewhat. I think it's important for people to understand the level of diligence that goes into the preparation and oversight of a budget like this. And I certainly found it very reassuring to look at the lengthy list of quite detailed questions that members of the Audit and Risk Committee had asked and sought feedback on and to know that they are endorsing this as the draft budget to come to us tonight, I think should give us all comfort that very careful consideration has gone into this. It's not an easy budget because it would be true to say we would like to have more money to spend than we have. And there are some variations that are noted. We have spent We have spent less on staff than anticipated and that's because of staff vacancies largely. We are operating in a very competitive employment market where many people are getting jobs in lots of other workplaces and that's something for us all to contemplate in terms of how we ensure that Darabben is an employer of choice. Interest rates, of course, have gone up and as councillor Nugent mentioned, we bought in-house the Darabben Resource Recovery Centre, which I think is a really positive move. I'll stop there because I've reached time and commend the budget to everyone.
Thank you. Any other councillors would like to speak on this item? Would like to speak against this item? Then I'll put this item to vote. All those in favour? That has been carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is extensions of temporary parklets and the new outdoor dining and trading policy 9.2. Councillors, would you like to ask any questions to our officers? Are there any questions in reference to this, councillors? As our officers are available to ask these questions? If not, then I'll ask for a mover. Councillor Dimitriades, do I have a second?
Sorry, Mayor, I wanted to move it with an amendment.
Sure. Councillor, you wanted to see the amendment? That's not a problem. Councillor Dimitriades? Your amendment, has it been circulated?
Yes.
Excellent. So we'll just wait for that to come up on the screen and if you can just kindly confirm that if that is your amendment? And then just confirm and then if there's councillors that would like to ask questions, they can do so. Councillor Dimitriades, is that your amendment? With the added addition?
Mayors, for the sake of clarity, can we make it clear there's no amendment, there's an alternative motion?
Yeah, it's an alternative. Can you kindly confirm if that's your alternative motion?
Yeah, that's page one, but there's also page two.
Yep. To our officers, can we kindly see page two?
Just bring it up. There was a light. It may be long.
Okay, thank you.
Ready? Georgie, can you put the second part up so that...
Thank you. And can you just change the heading of the officer's recommendation to the alternative?
Yes, that's correct.
And I'm happy to second, Mayor.
Just missing an 'i', yep. Councillors, before we enter the debate, do councillors have any questions in reference to this for clarification? Councillor McCarthy?
If we can just get some clarity, I think there might have been some very late amendments to come through. I'm not opposed to them. I just want to, if we can just get clarity around what the difference is in the amendments, the effect of the amendments versus the substantive motion.
To our officers, can you kindly answer that question? Did you hear that? Thank you, Chad.
If you, sorry, can I have the question again, please?
It's just a quick explanation of what the effect of the amendments are, also the alternative items there compared to the substantive.
I would characterise a lot of the changes as more about in the nature of clarity in relation to the effect of the motion. If we refer to the earlier part of the motion, first part, first slide. Essentially, the new Part E, Part E is a revision of previous revised wording and just clarifies that existing permits must be applied, existing parklets will require an application and an assessment process and that that assessment process, as part of that assessment process, applicants will need to demonstrate compliance against safety and compliance issues. And if the application is unsuccessful, only then would the parklet be removed. I think the form of motion was, didn't make that abundantly clear. So it makes it clear that there is an assessment process. The final part of, on the next page, just asks for a further report back to council for some further information in relation to parklets.
Councillor Dimitriades, is this a question?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, mayors, through you. I just wanted to clarify the recommendation that's in the policy. To E, that was previously, which is, so this is an alternate motion, which means it's not just clarity on what was previously in there. I just wanted to double check. Oh, can you please advise that the, what it actually says in two E is that the recommendation was to make explicit that all existing parklets will need to be demolished and removed?
So your question is, sorry?
How is that different to what this particular alternate motion is saying? So it seems like there is definitely two different opinions here. I'm trying to say it nicely.
I'll assist if I can through you, Mayor. Councillor Dimitriades is correct. The original motion said all existing parklets will be removed. The alternative motion says we'll work with businesses where we can to try and retain those parklets and help them to become compliant. That's the difference between the two.
To try and work with them so they do get the permits through. Any other questions in reference to this, councillors? Thank you to our officers. Councillor Dimitriades?
Thank you, Mayor. So just after that clarification, I wanted to, I'm moving this alternate motion for a number of reasons. But just going back, Darabben council made parklets available as a result of the COVID pandemic and the lockdowns, which was also made possible because of a grant by the state government. When opening up after the pandemic, a number of Darabben businesses embraced the parklet idea because it provided a lifeline to many businesses when there were restrictions on indoor numbers. They also became much loved by the community, particularly as the weather warms up, coming up too. So Darabben previously, however, we passed a motion, a resolution to end parklets at a meeting while I was on approved leave. However, thankfully, going back, we collectively rescinded that agreement and gave a much-needed reprieve to businesses, some of whom have spent significant money on improving these parklets. By developing and releasing this policy on parklets for community consultation, Darabben is embracing the outdoor dining experience. And I welcome the continued extension of the existing parklet system as presented to us today. But as I stated previously, I cannot support a blanket rule that at the end of the six-month extension, all parklet structures must be demolished and removed. Therefore, I'm moving this alternate motion, taking all the good bits of the new proposed parking policy along with what I would call some common sense changes. The first change is that it allows safe parklets that are in good conditions to remain installed until the decision of the permit is made. And if a permit is granted, a parklet can be upgraded in line with the approved design guidelines via renovation rather than being demolished and then rebuilt. However, if the permit is rejected according to this alternate motion, the structure can then be removed. As a council that is focused on the climate emergency, I believe we should be looking at ways to minimise unnecessary demolition and construction. Hence, my recommendation to all councillors to vote in favour of this amendment. It is important to note that this amendment does not favour existing parklet holders in the permit process, but it does ensure that we do not penalise businesses who have invested in their parklets or it doesn't, it also produces unnecessary demolition and construction emissions. I believe there are no losers with this amendment. Other important aspects of this amendment is to receive a report on the actions and decisions of other councils in the area. So we can learn from the experiences of councils who are further down the track of embracing parklets as a permanent addition to their outdoor trading. So finally, this alternate motion, I think I've been calling it an amendment too, is calling on council to explore options that could enable Darabben to operate temporary parklets. So Darabben businesses can trial the concept of a parklet prior to making the significant capital expenditure which is required to install a permanent parklet. So just finally, I just want to thank councillor Greco and councillor Nugent on their suggestions as well to this alternate motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Nugent?
Thank you, Mayor Williams, and thank you councillor Dimitriades for putting forward the alternative motion, which I think makes a lot of sense for our community. So this is something that, as councillor Dimitriades said, came up in COVID, allowing for outdoor dining, it's been used across the municipality. And now the question for us is what to do with it now that COVID is for the most part over. But we still really, really want to encourage outdoor dining. We want to encourage uses of parklets across the city, particularly in the north. I'd really like to see some more on Edward Street and Broadway particularly. And what we have here is, we're going to put it out to consultation, we're going to find out what people think and we're going to put in a policy that really finds out what we need to do to get this right. And I think it's absolutely worth looking into temporary parklets. When some of the councillors were in Canberra in June for the album conference, we saw what a parklet looks like on the back of a trailer. So there's absolutely scope for parklets and pop-up parklets that can be moved across the municipality, which is really fantastic. I know in My Ward, E Pugliese, one of the cafes on Elizabeth Street, has had a really successful parklet. I have my book club at Wesleyan. I always notice the parklet there and how much use it gets. I think High Street is a fantastic place for these parklets. I think in the economic environment that we have, I think it's very, very worth thinking about outdoor trading, thinking about how we can support our businesses. And I think the big question will be how we encourage others and how we share space. So if there's a parklet at your business, how does the business next door feel about that? How do we manage those neighbours and how do we encourage this across the municipality? So really looking forward to what people have to say on this and I commend the officers' work for the draft policy as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Nugent. Are there any other councillors would like to speak on this item? Like to speak against this item? If there are no other councillors would like to speak on the item, then I'll put the item to vote. All those in favour? And that has been carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. We'll move on to the next agenda item. Open space pilot, the National Road Safety Action Grants 9.3. I'll just wait for the officers and if councillors have any questions to our officers before we enter the debate. Thanks, Alan. Councillors, do we have any questions in references? Councillor Greco?
Thank you, Mayor Williams. So through you, if I may ask a question to our officers. In the event that this particular project is not supported by the federal government grant stream, what consequences does it have for council in terms of it then council possibly take it on this project? And how would that decision be made? Would that be a decision that would be made by officers? Or would that then come back to the council through a council decision-making process in determining whether the project should go ahead in the future if federal funding is not received?
Thank you. Our officers?
Thank you for the question, councillor Greco, through you, Mayor. If there is an unsuccessful bid for the grant funding, we would find a way to prioritise this type of activity through the operational programmes that the transport team run in the coming financial year to support the initiative.
Councillor Greco?
Just a supplementary question to that. Will there be any financial implications of supporting this project in the next financial year? That is, would any other projects have to be deprioritised as a result?
Thank you for the question again, councillor Greco, through you, Mayor. If the grant funding is successful, there is an in-kind contribution for supporting the project. If the grant funding is unsuccessful, we would need to prioritise this activity against other existing operational programmes that the transport team run. So there may be other things that do not progress, so this could progress.
Just finally, through you, Mayor, and just to pick up on my initial question. What gets progressed or not progressed? Is that something that will be determined by council through a council resolution or not?
Vanessa, my help.
Thank you, councillor Greco, and through you, Mayor Williams. Councillor Greco, one of the recommendations we're putting towards you this evening is that council commits to implementing the open streets or a similar road safety improvement pilot next financial year as a part of schools' council school transport programme if the funding is not successful. And the reason why we're recommending that to you councillors is because of the quite significant transport safety issues that are being experienced at Breen Street. We do consider it a priority school that needs some support. So we are recommending that when we design the schools programme for next year, that it would actually take priority in how we allocate our operational funding.
If I may assist through you, Mayor. And we would brief council on the implications of that in terms of projects that fall down the priority list through the budget process. Is that correct, Vanessa? Just to answer directly councillor Greco's question.
Thank you, Peter. Yes, it is. We would brief you on the programme that we're proposing to run for the year ahead.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any other further questions in reference to this? If not, do I have a mover? Councillor Nugent? Do I have a seconder? I saw councillor McCarthy's hand as a seconder. Councillor Nugent?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Williams. Active transport and sustainable transport is very close to my heart. I think it's probably one of the, if not the, most important issue to me as a councillor, or one of them. I've got an 11-month-old who's been on the back of my e-bike since he was eight months old. So I'm very, very, very conscious of what it means to ride around the city with a child. And I think I would encourage anyone who is interested in this project to have a look at the video that's available about open streets where you see kids with chalk, you see kids on their bikes, walking, playing, having activities outside their school rather than just having cars nearby. And I think it's an absolutely fantastic project. I think that Mary Beck are our neighbours, they have done six of these pilots already with council funding. And I think this is a very modest way for us to start. I do hope that we get the grant. While we are hoping to do the first one in My Ward, I think this is something that I'm sure there would be a school in every ward of council that would be interested in this project and I'd really, really like to see it expand. When I think about, you know, what's important as a councillor, I think what's more important than children's safety. And I really think that this is worth pursuing. Something that I did think was really interesting from the report was when it talks about how in COVID, well, prior to COVID, only 21% of trips in Darabben were made by walking and cycling. And then quotes, "The community responses to your street, your say group A and B consultation shows that concerns raised relating..." relating to pedestrian and cycle safety, 30% of all issues raised was more than there was for motor vehicles, which was 37% of all issues." So I think this shows that there's a need to do this sort of project, not just outside of schools, but also for separated bike lanes, et cetera, so kids can get to school, primary school and to high school by bike or by walking. And I think that, you know, our neighbours in Marybeck, they've put the cost up where they were doing $10 a person, per resident on active transport. And I think that's gone up to $11 or $12 a person in their recent budget. We're nowhere near that. So this is a very small and modest place to start, but I think it's very important, and I think it would be fantastic for St Raphael's. One thing that I found particularly horrible in the report was where it said that there have been incidences where parents have gotten their kids to go after traffic officers. So I really hope that this is something that can change attitudes. And I think there's going to be a lot of laughs and a lot of happiness when this project goes ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Newton. Councillor Rennie? Oh, councillor McCarthy, sorry.
Sorry. No worries. Thanks, Mayor. I endorse everything that councillor Newton has said. Probably just wanted to add, I think every councillor here probably has heard from either a school or parents or carers in their ward or in other parts of the city around the sort of driver behaviour that has been witnessed and seems to have been on the increase in the post-Covid period, which is a concern. I should say that Darabin council actually has a really good track record of taking proactive measures in terms of local safety action to reduce the risk to vulnerable road users. Children getting to school is one of the key groups of vulnerable road users that we've identified. And council has in the past, you know, received awards and accolades for those efforts. We shouldn't rest on our laurels. The work continues all the time. Councillor Newton has talked about the work that Marybeck to our immediate west has done. This is not a radical proposal by any stretch, it's a very small proposal. But it does demonstrate what can be done and what could be done, in fact, in a range of locations across our city. I actually think this is a really good location for us to test this, though, because St Raphael's is one of the schools that we know has a pretty broad reach. So there are children probably from most of the wards in Darabin that go to St Raphs. It's not just a local school, it actually is a school, it's a non-government school, therefore it has a broad reach. So I can tell you now, I know of families that have children at St Raphs who live in Reservoir, who live in Northcote, who live across the creek in Coburg. So we know that there is a high amount of driving to the school for drop-offs, and hence this is a good testing ground. I'm really looking forward to seeing what comes back, but I also, as councillors would know, have asked what else we can be doing in advocacy around other schools, where we know that the 40k zones are too close, too limited, and there are some other actions that could be taken as well. So good to see this. Thanks to the officers and look forward to seeing what comes out of it.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. Are there any other councillors would like to speak on the item or against the item? If not, then I'll put that item to vote. All those in favour? That has been carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. We'll move on to the next item. 9.4, Integrated Families Youth and Children Strategy, Community Engagement. Do we have our officers here available? Thank you. Councillors, are there any questions in reference to this item before we move into the debate? Councillor McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. I was just hoping our officers could, just in addition to what's covered in the report, give us an idea about what actions or strategies council might undertake to support reaching what's often described as the missing middle, the cohort of young people, generally in that sort of 8 to sort of 15 age group. They're not the older young people, they're not the younger young children. That's that middle group that we know is often difficult to do consultation with. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. The middle years cohort is a particular part of the community that this strategy is aiming to engage with. And the engagement plan has a number of strategies intended in it in order to reach that age group. And in fact, to determine what it actually constitutes the middle years is one of the first questions that we'll be looking at and seeking input from about. We will be reaching out, obviously, to some of those more common or more obvious partners with us. Would be, you know, schools, the out-of-school programmes, those sort of places that young people will obviously be at. We'll also be wanting to look at other partners where they're potentially looking and engaging with those who are disengaged from school potentially, or school is not particularly relevant to them in terms of an engagement strategy. So obviously, we'll be working very closely with other agencies such as your community health, where we've got youth workers working with a large age, a broad age range. Obviously, those young people in primary schools as well as high schools as they transition into the high school and young youth area. So the middle years is definitely an area that we know that there's currently service gaps, both within council and across the sector more broadly. So it is a pivotal component of this engagement.
Thank you. Are there any other councillors would like to ask questions at this point in time? If not, then I'll ask for a mover. Do I have a mover on this item? Councillor McCarthy, and I had councillor Greco. Councillor McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks also to Jo for that response. I'm really pleased to see this report come to us, sorry, this report come to us to enable the delivery of stage one community engagement for our Integrated Families Youth and Children Strategy. This process that we are about to undertake is important because when it comes to how we service, support, engage and connect with young people and children in our community, it's really important that we do the best possible job we can, despite, I suppose, the natural barriers that do exist in terms of having meaningful engagement. Hence, my question about the middle years. Being the parent of a 10-year-old and also a 13-year-old, I can tell you it is challenging sometimes to find out what they think, because you can make your predictions, but you don't always get a clear or straight answer. So all the power to our officers who are about to engage with that entire demographic in terms of trying to do meaningful engagement. Because council is, can sometimes be an obscure thing. What council does can sometimes feel a little bit distant. And yet, we know that the work of this organisation and its various services and infrastructure has a meaningful impact on young people every day. Just the report that we just talked about just before is an example of that. If we can make the experience of children getting to school safer, then we're going to see more children ride their bikes and walk to school. So sometimes it's about infrastructure and advocacy, sometimes it's actually about services that we can offer. And that's the obvious ones, like our youth services, our funding of community infrastructure, everything from your skate parks and your sports clubs, all the way through to our less obvious interventions as well. So I'm really excited about the engagement that council's about to undertake. I think probably what I would say as well in relation to this is that sometimes these processes can tell us things that we actually don't feel comfortable hearing. And I think I would implore council to hear really clearly. If we aren't high on the radar of local children and young people, there's an opportunity for us. If the services that we offer aren't obvious, then there's an opportunity for us. If there are things that we don't do well, I think we should hear it and we should take action in relation to that. But I also really look forward to hearing the good stuff, too. And so I'm looking forward to what this engagement tells us. I applaud our officers for the thoroughness of the work that they've put into this. And I think, as we all know, when you get close to the community, whatever age, you are going to get close to what you need to do. And I hope that we get close on this one. And hence, we've got a really in-depth process proposed, particularly around the middle years, and thanks to our officers for their work.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. Councillor Greco?
Thank you, Mayor Williams. I think, just to make a few additional points. I think this is a really important report, and it's an important piece of work that we're about to embark on. Council invests a lot of money in relation to supporting our youth, an age bracket from zero to 25. Just to think about the amount of money that we put into early childhood development, where council plays a pivotal role in our community in supporting families, particularly families from lower socio-economic background, to get access to services and activities for their children that they would not otherwise get access to in the private market. So this is really important in terms of understanding from children themselves what engagement council ought to have with them, and how our resources should be directed into ensuring that they get the best opportunities in relation to being supported throughout their early years and into their late teenage years. Also, I think what's important to note, and I'm really thankful for the officers for listening to councillors in relation to the input that we've had. And I just want to sort of emphasise one particular point is in regards to the impact and the growing impact in our community, something that's been recognised by the federal government, is in relation to discrimination and racism and how that impacts particularly on young people as they grow up. And it'd be good to get some understanding from young people as this work is carried out in drawing up their views. And the other thing that I think is really important is that this work will help us better structure our services from an equity perspective. Limited resources, and we should be directing our resources to those with greater socio-economic needs. And hopefully, we'll get that information to further develop the policy on the track. So thank you to our officers.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Greco. Are there any other councillors would like to speak for or against this item? If not, then I'll put that item to vote. All those in favour? That has been carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. The next item we have on our agenda this evening is the Reservoir Economic Analyst and Investment Attraction Strategy 9.5. Councillors, do you have any questions to our officers before we enter the debate? In reference to this item? Give you a moment. If there are none, I believe, councillor Lawrence?
I'm happy to move the item.
Was this question time? I haven't asked as yet. I believe there already might be an amendment. We have. We have an alternative motion, I believe. Okay, if there's no further questions, I'll ask, do we have a mover? Councillor Greco?
Happy to second.
And then I've got, well, councillor Lawrence also wanted to move, but councillor Greco had a second. So I'll give the option to councillor Lawrence. Did you want to second that item? No, happy? Okay, councillor Newton. But we'll have it up on the screen first before people would like to confirm if they want to second it or not. And there is an alternative motion. For those who are live streaming, we're just technically going to find where the alternative motion is, and we'll be putting that up on the screen. Be with us for one moment. No problem, thank you. Oh, good. Thank you. Councillor Greco, can you confirm if that is your alternative motion?
Yes.
Mayor, I'm happy to second, but I wonder if it might be worth specifying which ward councillors? Because that reads like all nine. Or perhaps ward councillors representing Reservoir? Happy to second, ma'am.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any questions to our officers in reference to this item before we enter the debate? If there are no questions, I'll ask councillor Greco kindly. As you've been the mover, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. This is a very important piece of work and a very important report that we have for us. This is a report that's been prepared not by council, but there has been a lot of council input in relation to this report. It's a report that's been commissioned or prepared by the Reservoir Revitalisation Board, which is a local board that's been established by state government. It's not the only one that exists, there's a couple that exist across the metropolitan area that look at developing areas in the middle ring of metropolitan Melbourne that are on the verge of strategic change and strategic development in the near future. So it's an important piece of work because it gives you a glimpse, I believe, the work that has been prepared by the revitalisation board about what are the opportunities that exist for the reservoir area. And a very detailed report, a very thorough report. And there's a lot of material there. I really urge councillors, particularly the councillors in the reservoir, that are within the reservoir area, and actually all councillors, to have a thorough look at this report, because it's a bit of a glimpse into the future, as I just said. It's important that we acknowledge the work that's been done because of the future implications, that a lot of the suggestions, recommendations, ideas that are developed in this report, and the flow-on effect that it will have for council and its future work, particularly in addressing some of the economic, social and developmental issues associated with the reservoir area. We know that Reservoir is one of the biggest suburbs in Melbourne, and it's becoming one of those suburbs that a lot of people want to actually try and live in there. It's a mixed suburb, both residential, commercial and also industrial. And so, and those lines and borders are constantly in, will be changing. And this report addresses some of those future trends. There's a real lot to go through in this report, but I just want to highlight a few things. Some of the subject matters that it deals with is issues that have got to do with transport, which I know is a real local issue for a lot of residents there. It deals about the reservoir activity centres, both the Broadway side and also the Edward Street side, and how that could be further developed into the future. And also, and I'll just finish on this point, it makes the point about revisiting the structure plan. When I first got on council, one of the first things I got involved with was the structure plan for Reservoir. It's about 14 years old, and this report says that that's something that needs to be quickly revisited. So I urge councillors to support the report.
Thank you. Can I actually ask a question? My question is that, as the terms of reference was established by the minister, should we also be addressing this letter and ccing the minister in reference to this item or not?
Through, Mayor, I'm sure the chair can check and consult with the ministry if they need to, so... need to, so if the mover and seconder are amenable, and check with the minister.
Excellent, thank you. Apologies for asking my question after councillor Greco moving the item. As a seconder, would you like to speak on the item?
Yes, I would, thank you, Mayor Williams. So this is a, it's a really good report. I think it's worth reading if anyone's interested in the Edwardson-Broadway part of Reservoir or the Reservoir Industrial Precinct. Something that came up in the Williamson Community Leadership Programme I'm doing this year was a concept of seventh-generation thinking. So when you're making decisions, you should be thinking about seven generations ahead, which is a concept that I really love. And as councillor, some of the things that we are putting forward will have impact short term and long term. And it was really interesting to reflect on my seven years on council and how much things have changed since then. Certainly, we didn't have the level crossing removal, we didn't have the new station, people were very sceptical about it. You know, in terms of that long-term thinking, we know that the number 11 tram, people have been expecting that and hoping for that for about 100 years. So some of the things that we need to be thinking about now in 2023 for the future, they've changed a lot, certainly over Covid. I hadn't heard of last mile distribution before, but that is very big in this report about what the Reservoir Industrial Precinct will be doing. I think it's worth looking at, if anyone's interested in this, you don't have to read the whole council report, I would start at page 354, which talks about how we need to work out how we see Reservoir Activity Centre in terms of its priority as a major activity centre or a local activity centre. It certainly talks about gaps in the retail offer. We had a report before about parklets. I'd definitely like to see more parklets in the area, I'd like to see more of the night-time economy as well. I think it does lack in dining options and nightlife options at this point. I think it's a really, really good idea to have the Broadway traders brought into the Traders' Association that Edward Street has. I think that's a very, very, very sensible proposal. And I think, yeah, I would really recommend read the few pages from three, page 354, it gives you a very good overview of what this is about. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Newton. Are there any other councillors who'd like to speak in reference to this item? Councillor Lawrence?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Williams. Yeah, look, I've welcomed this report, and obviously has its focus around coming from reservoir revitalisation, and, but I would say I hope that this council looks at a broader debate about economic development across Darabben, and something that is highlighted in the report in terms of the food and beverage industry, obviously coffee, beer, wine, salami, every kind of ethnic food is created in the city of Darabben. And this obviously links up with Darabben's council's commitment to the Preston market. So one of the things, I know, you know, we tend to go into economics and we talk about distributions, and we talk about bland things like everywhere's the same as Surf Coast and everywhere's the same as Ackling Street or whatever. But one thing missing in this report is understanding that multiculturalism has driven a unique food culture, that is, creating restaurants, bars everywhere, and that Reservoir, Preston and Thornbury are all interconnected. And that's really our future, in addition to the education that we've already commenced here, which is replacing the old metalwork and leatherwork manufacturing and clothing manufacturing that was the mainstay from 1945 through to 1985. So I just hope that this council looks a bit more deeply at economic development and the linkages between culture and multiculturalism, because the drivers in this city are some incredible now three-generation families from Europe, Middle East, Asia, and the authenticity of the food and the authenticity of the small beer craft beer in the city is really what's going to power things. And that obviously does link up to food manufacturing and packaging and other allied industries. So I think we've got a more cohesive economic future here than people might recognise.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence. Are there any other councillors who'd like to speak for or against the item? If not, then I'll put the item to vote. All those in favour? That has been carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. The next item that we have on tonight's agenda is planning property matters. I believe officers have amended the recommendation. Wait for that to be up on the screen, and officers can confirm. And councillors, if you would like to ask any questions in reference to this item. The reason for its recommendation that was changed was due to extra information was provided. So councillors, if you have any questions, now's your time, and then I'll ask if we do If there are no questions, then I will ask councillor Lawrence as the mover to, was that a question?
Who's moving?
Yep, no problem. Councillor Lawrence is the mover, do I have a seconder? Councillor Rennie, thank you. Councillor Lawrence?
Thank you, Mayor Williams. Yes, happy to move this timely, and well, some people may say it could have been done earlier, improvement to our governance, given the fact that this city is a major urban renewal centre of inner and middle northern suburbs. And that, as we know, has been, requires a hell of a lot of change and a hell of a lot of redevelopment that is going to be occurring here. So we need to move on from probably the more informal and relaxed roles of councillors in this city. And obviously, this has been spurred by the investigation and the introduction of fairly large-scale money politics into local government, which the state government's responding to as well in the planning space. So I think this is a robust approach, and it highlights how we can make transparent any interactions between the development industry and the council decision-makers, notwithstanding that we understand that local council have a changing role in the planning space in terms of very large developments over £50 million. But we still have the major part of change, urban fabric change in this city, is small-scale development, so that will still be falling in the council zone, and I think that the community will welcome this move to better governance.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence. Councillor Rennie as a seconder, would you like to speak on the item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Williams. I'm really pleased to see this come to council, but I think it's also important to say that I don't believe this council bears any similarity to AC council where serious problems emerged with corruption that are well-known at this stage. I'm really proud to be part of a council where there aren't close relationships between councillors and developers, where people have not by and large been elected to council with the support of developers or with money from the development industry. And I think that's something where as a council should be very proud of. But I think this is also a timely reminder to councillors that when we sit in the planning committee and make decisions on planning matters, we're not there as advocates for the local community in so much as we are there as impartial decision-makers who under legislation have a responsibility to assess facts on their merits, the applications on their merits, to come in with an open mind, ready to be persuaded, whatever we hear, both from applicants and from local residents. And I think that having a register that captures our interactions with members of the community who seek to influence us on planning matters, whether to influence in favour of a planning application or to object to a planning application, to make that transparent, I believe, is a very positive thing. Nothing in this stops councillors from having those discussions, from informing themselves and from being part of their community, but I think that this will be something that our community will welcome. And they may ask questions, it may raise eyebrows, that's not a bad thing. That is part of the process of encouraging transparency and good governance across council, and I commend this motion to everyone.
Thank you, councillor Rennie. Any other councillors? Councillor Greco?
Thank you, Mayor Williams. Look, I agree with the previous two councillors. I think this is an important piece of work, and I'm hoping that tonight we'll be able to endorse this. Why is it important? Because again, it lifts the level of transparency. And why is that important, particularly in the development space? We see the amount of time, we know the amount of attention, and also resources that is being thrown towards future housing strategies, and so there'll be a lot of development that will be occurring, obviously, to try and house people that are seeking housing. But that has to be done in an open and transparent manner, and I believe that having a register will go a long way down that track. It doesn't mean that we can't talk to objectors and people within the planning space, but we just have, we have to register that and ensure that that is done in an open and transparent manner with the presence of officers where it needs to be and things like that. The only final point I would make is that the inspectorate, the local governing inspectorate that has recommended these guidelines, predominantly recommended these guidelines for developers in terms of our interaction with developers. And we're not like any other councillors, councillor Rennie said, we're going a step further. Not only would these apply to our interaction with developers, but also apply with our interaction with objectors. So that takes us beyond requirements of the inspectorate, which I think is a very positive thing, and I think that will set us over and above many other councils, and also provide leadership in relation to other councils in following suit. Thank you.
Yes, as being a council that we're very progressive in the way we go about things, and we have not been asked to do this, but this council has decided that we would like to be in the forefront of continuing in being open, transparent and also showing accountability. And this is one of those things that we've decided to take up of that platform. Are there any other councillors who'd like to speak on the item? If not, then I will put that item to vote. All those in favour? That's been carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. We'll move over to the next agenda item this evening. Property manners, sale of minor assets in Zoe's Circuit. Do we have any questions in reference to this item? If not, then I'll ask for a mover. Do I have a mover for this item? Councillor Rennie, do I have a seconder? Councillor McCarthy? Councillor Rennie?
Thank you, Mayor Williams. This is a fairly straightforward property matter relating to a sale of a disused laneway or piece of road that actually backs on to Arthurton Road. It's more straightforward than many in that it wasn't a contested piece of land, and this is the final stage in the process. So when council proposes to sell a parcel of land that is not needed for council's purposes, we're required in the first instance to advertise that to the community and to seek their feedback. That has happened, there hasn't been any feedback, no doubt because there isn't competing neighbours particularly, and so this one is fairly straightforward. With no submissions, council is simply proposing to complete the sale of this land to the adjoining property.
Councillor McCarthy?
I have nothing, nothing to add, ma'am.
Thank you. If there's nothing else to add from councillors, then I'll put that item to vote. All those in favour? That has been carried, thank you. Our next agenda item we have on this evening is governance report for September 2023. Councillors, do we have any questions to our officers in reference to this item? 9.8. If there are no questions, you have a question, apologies. Councillor Dimitriades?
So I'm wanting to move that the mayoral election is moved to a date in the future, and I just wanted to ask officers whether this was enough time from now in terms of notice for the date, for organisations to occur and for the mayoral election to actually still occur at a date in the future. So currently, the mayoral election's on the 30th of November, but we're hoping to move it about a week or so in the, in the future, and whether that is still appropriate, enough time for officers to still do what they need to do to get the meeting organised.
Sure. Over to our officers, if you're able to answer that question.
Three, Mayor, that's fine, councillors should note, the mayoral election should be held as close as possible after the 12 months of the term, so that currently finishes on the 30th of November, and that's the only requirement in the Act. In terms of administrative lease supporting this, we can support a change in move of the date.
And, yeah, just one other question, is it also enough time for the public to be informed of the change of date?
If you're moving the date backwards, yes, because that adds more time. So doing it now gives us time to provide notice of that change to the public.
Councillors, in reference to this governance report, September 23, do I have a mover in reference to this item? I had two hands went up at the virtually the same time. Sorry, I don't know who went first. Can anybody help? Sorry?
Susan.
You have to.
I'll go to councillor Dimitriades, and I'll go to councillor Rennie.
Mayor, I wanted to move the officer's recommendation with the addition of the mayoral election being moved to the 7th of November, no, the 7th of December, sorry, 2023, so a week later.
Three, Mayor, it's probably worth noting, there's an alternative officers' motion here that is being moved, which is different to the one published in the agenda as well. So that's why there are some changes in red, which officers have made as an alternative officers' rec, and then I believe councillor Dimitriades is seeking to move an amended motion with those alternative changes plus some additions in it.
Councillors, I'm going to ask for an adjournment, because I think this is something I need to unpack and discuss with our officers at the moment, if that's a possibility. Can we kindly please adjourn for 10 minutes, if that's okay? Thank you.
We have an amendment or an alternative motion coming up, is that right? Councillor Dimitriades?
Yep.
We're currently on the governance report, September 2023, 9.8, this evening's agenda And there has been a extra point added, which is point number 11. Is that your extra point? Can you kindly confirm? Councillor Dimitriades? Thank you. Do I have a seconder in reference to this item?
I'm happy to second it, Mayor Williams, and I'd just like to say the sound system's not very strong, so councillors can talk into the mics more.
Okay, no problem. Thank you, councillor Lawrence, for second in the item. Councillor Dimitriades?
Yes, thank you. In terms of the governance report, this is something we receive every month. I've added the point 11 in regards to the mayoral election this year, and that's because we've been informed that certain councillors may not be able to attend on the date of the 30th of November, and I think it's imperative that all councillors are able to attend that
And I think it's imperative that all councillors are able to attend that meeting, particularly since the new Local Government Act has said that we need a majority of five councillors to vote in a mayor. And what we saw in Yarra some time ago with the election of the mayor was a bit, I guess that's a bit of an eye opener as well, which is another reason that we, I think it's imperative that all councillors do attend. And as we've also heard, that we can move the date without too much trouble. I think this is probably the best way forward, where we all agree to a date so everyone can be there. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dimitriades. Councillor Lawrence?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Williams. Yes, councillor Dimitriades has covered it quite well. Just need to mention that obviously this governance report is often a report with a range of actions in it. And in this case, we also have where delegation is being dealt with. Obviously, the local council is elected by residents and is the body that is the corporate body of the council. But the council's operations do not come all, all from this chamber. They go through delegation of skilled and qualified officers in various roles. And so we have those delegations being refreshed and from time to time at different points of the year, and they are also dealt with in this report.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence. Any other councillors would like to speak in reference to this item? Councillor Rennie?
Thank you, Mayor Williams. I think we're doing the report a disservice if we don't note those things which I think are particularly important. And one, one of those on this occasion is the revised advisory committee model terms of reference. This has been a significant piece of work by our staff and it reflects the significant work of staff that goes into managing the advisory committees. There was an attempt here to create some uniformity across different committees where expectations can vary and to reduce the administrative work that goes into servicing these committees. I personally think this is very worthwhile and very necessary because I want our staff doing work in the community, not tied up with minutes and agendas and writing us reports. We as councillors have the opportunity to attend advisory committee meetings and we have a responsibility to keep our colleagues informed of things that come up that are particularly pertinent and we think our colleagues should be aware of. We shouldn't be relying on staff time that could be better spent with community members and with genuine community engagement. We shouldn't expect too much of a diversion of that time towards servicing us as a group of councillors when we are already privileged with attendance at these reports. So I think that that is an important thing that needs to happen. I will also note that whilst I'm supporting the governance report, I personally don't support the final item of this. I think it's incumbent upon councillors to look in their diaries a year ahead of time. The dates of the statutory, the special council meeting are set well ahead of time. And I believe that there's probably few more important meetings for councillors to prioritise their attendance at than the election of the mayor each year. When we change a meeting to suit one, we almost inevitably create a situation where others are disadvantaged. And, you know, this has happened in the past and it is incumbent upon councillors to prioritise attendance, not make alternative choices.
Thank you, councillor Rennie. Are there any other further councillors would like to speak for or against the item? Councillor Newton?
Thank you, Mayor Williams. I'll be speaking against the item just due to number 11. I've delayed a flight to Italy to attend a special counting, special meeting for mayor and deputy mayor in the past. And I think that we have ample time to decide whether we come to that meeting or not. And last year we had eight councillors at that meeting. So it has happened before, that's not all nine circumstances changed.
Thank you, councillor Newton. Are there any other councillors would like to speak in reference to this item or against? You do have a write of reply in reference to the item. Would you like to speak? Thank you, councillor Dimitriades.
Thank you, ma'am. I just want to make clear that there's been assumptions being made that people are going on holidays or away so they can't be at the mayoral election. What's been missed is what if there is a health concern or if there is anything more serious that cannot be avoided at that time? And so I would ask that those councillors retract their statements about holidays, et cetera. Thank you.
I think it was just a general comment in reference to when people, when these dates are set, that trying to, if you are having a holiday was to actually look in advance regarding your calendar. I might ask the governance person whether it's worthwhile in separating this and voting them on separately or as a whole?
Through you, ma'am, my understanding is you can determine to take a motion in parts if you so wish. I think an alternative might be to move the whole and if somebody might foreshadow if it goes down, then they'll move the original. That might be an alternative way to deal with it.
Okay. All right, I'll do it as a whole. If that fails, then we'll do it as an alternative and we'll do it separately. So I'll put this item to vote. All those in favour? I have councillor Dimitriades, councillor Rennie, councillor Greco, councillor McCarthy, councillor Lawrence, councillor Williams and all those against councillor Newton. Thank you, and that item has been passed. Thank you, councillors. We'll move over to the next agenda item this evening, which is submission of the federal government multicultural framework review, 9.9. Do we have any questions to our officers before we enter the debate in reference to this item? Councillor Greco?
Thanks, Mayor Williams. Just this afternoon, I just asked our officers to send me through a, some small changes to incorporate in the, the motion that we're going to carry tonight. I suppose my question is, is that, I'm not sure whether that has been circulated or not.
Okay.
Nothing new in the matters. They're just picking up on some of the briefing session discussions that we had and that were not included in, in the body of the report. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Greco. Can we ask over to our officers in reference to that item?
Through you, ma'am. The amendment itself has been provided to our governance team and is up on, up on the screen there. In terms of circulation to all councillors, I'll just check. Yes, that was sent at 4:54 this afternoon to all councillors and the executive team.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, councillor Greco? Thank you. Are there any further questions in reference to this item, councillors?
Yes.
Councillor Newton?
I'd just like to understand what...
You kindly stand.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I didn't see the email at 4:54, sorry. So I wanted to understand what, ensure that mainstream Australia is also addressed. I'm not clear on what that means.
Thank you. Over to our officers, if you can kindly elaborate on councillor Newton's question.
Through, through you, ma'am. The, the framework itself is seeking input in terms of multicultural Australia and is very specific to multicultural Australia. The, the alternate motion as printed is basically seeking to lobby or advocate to the federal government to actually broaden the scope of the review to ensure that mainstream Australia is covered as well, not just multicultural communities, particularly given the increasing proportion of Australia's population that has a multicultural background now. So it wasn't included in the original submission. Officers agreed with the point that was made by the councillor, but the terms of reference do, are very specific to multicultural Australia rather than thinking more broadly around mainstream Australia.
Councillor Rennie?
Thank you. I've got a question in the same vein, Kylie, which is to say, I'm not sure that I understand what is meant by mainstream. Because mainstream as a word is typically used to define or indicate a majority and the majority of Australia's population is multicultural. So I'm, is there a chance that someone won't understand what is meant by mainstream?
Yep. When you do ask questions, can I kindly ask officers, sorry, councillors to please ask the questions through, through me as the mayor? That would be greatly appreciated.
So through you, ma'am, the, the background given by the councillor that is seeking the alternate motion is that in light of the census data, seeking to broaden the policy review outcomes to the wider community, noting that currently the concept of multiculturalism is still perceived as only relevant to people from a non-English speaking background. So mainstream Australia is not addressed as part of the multicultural framework review. The councillor who's seeking to move the alternate motion may wish to give further clarity, but, but that is, that's the information we have.
Councillor Rennie?
Thank you, ma'am. Through you, I wonder if you could inquire as to whether, if the words were changed to ensure that the wider community is also addressed as part of the review panel's deliberation, that that would indicate in the view of our staff, their desired intent?
Sure. Is that a possibility, Kylie, that we can include that?
That would be up to the councillor.
Yeah. Councillor Greco? No problem. Are there any other further questions in reference to this item? Councillor Lawrence?
Do we have a second yet?
No, we don't.
Happy to second the motion.
Through you, ma'am. Can I just check with the mover and seconder that they wanted to change those words as proposed before they move it and second it? Were you moving it? Yes?
Yes, my understanding is it's wider community or something instead of mainstream Australia? So, yeah.
Thank you. Just get that up on the screen for you, ma'am. You just stand cross.
Councillor Lawrence, are you happy with that?
Yep, that's what I assumed had happened. Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Greco. Can you kindly confirm? Thank you. Okay, are there any other further questions? Okay, councillor Greco? Over to you as being the mover on the item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. And thank you, officers, and thank you councillors for the, the feedback in correcting the wording. As councillors will be aware, the federal government's initiated a review of its national multicultural policy, which is a piece of work which has been long awaited. The last time the multicultural policy was reviewed is a couple of decades, decades ago. A lot has happened since then and, and we've had particularly conservative governments for quite a chunk of that time. And what's been noted is that the multicultural policy is outdated and also over those years it had been diminished and had been basically sidelined to just basic activities and basic functions in terms of framing multicultural Australia and also framing the, the interrelationship that occurs between, like the wider community, with the discussion we just had before with the multicultural community. What our officers have done, just to go through the submission, they've basically picked up on a lot of the activities that council is currently engaged in that have to do with our multicultural and interfaith community and also the interaction that that has with the broader community. And so we've highlighted a lot of those things in our, in our submission and to show that we're actually not only recommending certain activities and functions that the federal government should take on, but also that we are currently working as a council in that particular direction. Also, we've put in other recommendations and we had a briefing earlier this week where officers have taken on a lot of the input from councillors and incorporated that in the submission statement. Councillors, why is this important? Well, it, it's very important, councillors, because we know that Australia's population will increase. I think the latest figures that have been bandied around is 40 million in 40 years' time. That's a substantial shift. And what we saw in the last census, councillors, is a paradigm shift where 51.5% of Australians, people that live in Australia, have one, were either born in Australia or have one parent born overseas. So what we're seeing is that Australia is diversifying quite substantially and that will increase into the future. We see that, yeah, within, within our city. So we really need a policy, a new multicultural policy that embraces what future Australia is and what a new identity for Australia is, obviously with the incorporation of our indigenous people and how multicultural Australia fits in with a, with our First Australians. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Greco. Councillor Lawrence, as the second, would you like to speak on the item?
Yes, Mayor Williams, thank you for inviting me to speak. Yes, this, this motion is, is obviously encouraging the new federal government to, to explore this whole issue and obviously in a proper manner to build a cohesive, harmonious and tolerant Australia going forward. And as we know, it's already diverse. The importance of talking about wider Australian community and not just locating multiculturalism in an assimilationist model where we look at multiculturalism or cross-culturalism being something that migrants have to negotiate with. I think we need to also, well, we all, we do know, aware of that in this city, that many people come to this city from other countries where they were actually migrants. And obviously that is a function of refugees and people seeking safer place to live. So cross-culturalism and interculturalism, multiculturalism requires, just because society does, changes from both dominant cultures, older cultures, newer cultures, the oldest culture and negotiations in those spaces. And even the discussion about the voice is a negotiation about what a democratic structure that was brought here largely through English, Irish or Scottish traditions, how we're going to interact with a community that's been here for 65,000 years. So I welcome the amendment of councillor Greco and whether, you know, what terminology we use to understand that building a multicultural and a successful cross-cultural society isn't just a question of deficits, it's a question of exchanges and gaps and learnings on all sides. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence. Are there any further councillors would like to speak for or against the item? Councillor Rennie?
Thank you, ma'am. First and foremost, I'd like to thank all the staff involved in the preparation of a very fine submission to the federal government's multicultural framework review. I'm very pleased that councillor Greco has agreed to take out the use of the word mainstream as it was, because I think it was inherently problematic in that it suggested and came from a narrative which said that multicultural communities are not mainstream. And I would actually argue that right now in Australia, we are a multicultural country. We are not an Anglo-Celtic country. And in fact, we have never been an Anglo-Celtic country. Let's be really clear. This was not English land, never was. This was and is Aboriginal land. And so I think that what we need to mainstream is a very clear view that we were never and will never be an Anglo-Celtic country, that we are now a multicultural country founded on Aboriginal land that was never ceded. And, you know, I think actually what we should be talking about is intersectionality. My children are growing up in a family of Vietnamese, Germanic and Anglo heritage with a parent born overseas. with a parent born overseas in a non-English speaking country. But they also grow up in a queer household, in a neurodiverse household where they're exposed to all types of intersectionality and difference. And that that is the contemporary reality of living in Australia today. And the federal government's multicultural framework review needs to recognise this and needs not to create silos. And so whilst I respect councillor Greco's enormous passion for this area, I'm actually not convinced of the merits of the Office of Multicultural Affairs as a way of proceeding because I think it silos multicultural issues rather than saying this is who we are and we need to come to terms with who we are as a country made up of people from all over the world on Aboriginal land and with people who will find all sorts of ways to be Australian.
Thank you, councillor Rennie. Are there any further councillors would like to speak for or against the item? If there are no further speakers, then I will put the item to vote. All those in favour? That has been carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. Now, we do not have any items to be tabled this evening and we do not have any notice of motions and nor do we have any urgent business items or any consideration of reports considered confidential. So therefore I'm going to conclude tonight's council meeting and say thank you to our officers, those who are live streaming and those in the gallery this evening and to councillors also. So thank you. And the meeting is closed at six past eight. Thank you.